We will go ahead and call it the order, the twenty first city assault or anywhere in the city council meeting. That we'll start with the pledge. All the whole fall, Duncan here, here, Gabriel, there's Kramer, here, why haven't.
Here.
It's to our civil to pledge, we pledge promote civilly by listening, being respectful of others and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. Thanks to perfect and approve the agenda as part as public changes supervisor Sullivan will not be able to attend this evening. I mean, plan to just have discussion on item twenty one as well. Any other changes to the agenda?
No changes.
I'll move to perfect and through the agenda. I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quite head.
Yes.
Uh, next is citizen speak. So we've got a full house tonight. This is a time on the agenda for anybody that would like to speak on any non agenda items. For anybody this evening.
Yeah.
Alright, and we do uh, limit this to three minutes as well.
Hi, I'm Elaine, but I'm from the Soul and Food team, and I have to man Dave and Blaze also that work there. Um, and we, I talked to you last year about getting some space in the fire station. Because the pantry has stairs, no matter which way you take, it's stairs to get down to it. And some of our patrons struggle with stairs. Um, and these guys are good to help them with their groceries, getting back up the stairs. Um, but anyone with a wheelchair wouldn't be able to get down there. And I've looked at other options and I haven't found any. Um, and we're not in position to pay rent or buy a building. And so we're here to hopefully um, get some, some support from you guys for maybe getting some space in your new building. In the brush um, center in the basement. Um, and so that's why we're here.
Well, there would be, there would be other space available too.
Yeah, anyhow.
But because folks getting down there, it's dangerous, it's dangerous for us, you know, we're old.
Carrying all that food. When I try to carry like big boxes down and almost falling on the stairs, just getting the food down there that we give out. Um, so I'm looking for something without stairs. Um, if at all possible, I've looked at, you know, possibly anywhere else, but if you guys even have any other options, that might work too.
Absolutely.
That's why we're here so that hopefully you can see that as a benefit for the soul and community. For you guys and for us and for the people that come to our pantry.
And we serve them.
Yeah.
We will take that and talk and get back to you.
Okay.
I just wanted to say, um, so I work at City High School down in Iowa City and my program runs ours, our food bank. And um, A, it's incredibly important work. So thank you for what you do. Can we clap for them?
Yes.
There's nothing, there's nothing more important than food security in a community. And I also, we have to carry ours upstairs too. It's a lot. Canned goods are really heavy. So um, it makes total sense to need space. Um, especially something accessible for all of our citizens. So that's something that I definitely will keep in mind as we work with the space that we're developing as a city. So thank you again.
Thank you.
And if you guys ever want to look at what we have, you know, space kind of needed, we'd be happy to show you around at any time.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Tony, do you want to have something?
I'll be really quick. This is a good night. I wanted to thank Rod Sullivan, supervisor of Johnson County Board of Supervisors. The city of Solon and the previous council, the water report is out. And Rod Sullivan promised us four years ago, he said, we need a water study in the county. The experts will explain it to you. That's not for me. But it needs to be known, I called the high school this afternoon. It's important to me, we want the high school science kids to be in town and be here when it's discussed. This is their future and their water. And I recommend to everyone, the report is way over your head. If you go online, little village dot com. May fifteen last Friday by Paul Brennan, an extraordinary well done, in my opinion, interview with the geologist that did the study. And you will understand, it's an extraordinary thing to read. And the conclusion of all of this is very simple, five words, water is a finite resource. Government is now recognizing that. It's an enormous step forward beyond anything we'd ever hoped for. It's the beginning. Then I, I, I want to say, in the end, many years ago, my old retired lawyer father would say, you have your premise. Now conduct yourself accordingly. And I think that's where we are. Thank you for your time.
And welcome to go into that report at a future meeting. Any others? For citizens. Uh, that takes us to the consent agenda. So this would be approval of the minutes from the May seventh regular meeting. Approval of the list of bills, treasures, report and transfers of building permits. We have a handful of them this evening.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Why?
Yes.
Takes us to the public works directory report. Kim?
Um, yes, uh, let's see. Let's see, a lot going on. As I reported at the last meeting, we had um, we had Ian J. Electric and Cipro lined up to replace those poles at the SRNA. That did happen. It was an all day project. Thanks to Public Works for all their time and attention and um, collaboration. It took a lot of entities to make that happen and make sure those were um, that, that safety issue was addressed at the SRNA. Um, also at the SRNA, uh, Public Works has been busy planting flowers, which look very nice, painting the kiosks dugout and getting the um, last dugout re-roofed. So that looks great down there. Um, we also received our insurance check for the well three project. Um, minus the five thousand dollar deductible, we received approximately twenty thousand dollars. Uh, most of the uh, cost for the acidation of that well was not covered by insurance. They considered that maintenance, unfortunately. Um, so you will see that reflected in the budget amendment later in the agenda. Let's see, Public Works has been working on prepping the lots here across the street as council's been having discussions as to what should go on those lots in the future. The new truck was picked up, the council approved at the last meeting. And uh, you'll see that on the list of bills tonight. Uh, the water quality report has been prepared by um, Dave Richards and um, in the process of getting published, that's uh, required to be done by July first. Splash pad, uh, Chris and the entire team have been working on getting the splash pad open for this weekend. Saturday? Saturday is the day. So I don't know if the temperatures are going to cooperate, but Saturday is the day. Um, and also um. Uh, the uh, the brush, the purchase of the brush building is complete. City now owns that building. We will get it mode as soon as the weather cooperates. And uh, we just had the locks changed today. We've also been interviewing Public Works for the Public Works opening. We had conducted interviews this week. So hopefully we'll be making an offer here Thursday next week. Anything else that, if they would add, Ryan, Christine?
Uh, just that Nate and Matt, um, we started our cleaning project with a ground storage tank. So. Made that uh, cleared the grass away and then three foot strip around it, put down a weed barrier, put some river rock in there. Now the next step is power wash and try to get that cleaned up before the park gets busier.
Yeah, it's gotten some black stuff around the bottom of it. So they, they check in your consulted um, the, the um. The vendor, uh, and they sent us over some suggestions on how to clean that. So yeah. So that's all I have.
Alright.
Next city engineer report, Dave?
Yes, uh, we've been reviewing plans for harvest acres or for more type of harvest acres that will go through planning and zone review. Uh, that is uh, north of our highway line. So we'll be seeing that after the planning is done with the chance to take a look at it. Uh, we have received no comments on the anti-degredation report. So that's good that we, we're in the gears past that step. We have it to go into V N R to review next and then that'll be incorporated into our facility planning. So we're moving on track with that. Uh, May thirtieth, in this month, I'm meeting with Mike Gannon. Mike Gannon was the person that did the modeling of this area in Aquilor. I've been working with him as they, he's been developing that model, but now that it's final, they have it draft report. Want to go in depth with him on a couple of different communities that are in this area that it impacts. Just to make sure we understand um, exactly what we're looking at there. So I'll, I'll be able to talk with Mike a little bit more and then as we discuss what counts, we'll have that back with him as well. And then Trail Ridge Estates, part three, they have a sanitary sewer done. They're working on storm sewer. Uh, once they get that completed, you should be able to put in subdrain and then get ready to paving. So they're moving along pretty quickly on that one. It's all I have.
Alright, thanks. Yeah, city engineer. Takes us uh, to recognition. So item twelve, senior of the year for twenty twenty five, Larry Swan. So uh, we had our confirmation at the last meeting. Uh, it's really a cool thing that we have here. But Sandy had notes, uh, but just want to say, Larry, it's been an honor to get to know you over by time here in town here. Uh, getting engulfed in the, the leaving off outing that you helped put on each year and just everything else that you do. Uh, in town that you have volunteered and given so much to this community. This is a very uh, deserving award for. So congratulations on doing the twenty five senior of the year.
Mom, you said we could push the new.
Well, it's kind of a topic of today because we changed the date so your grandson could be with you. So the senior advocates elected you to be senior of the year for all the community service you've done for our community. So I give this to you.
Sandy, is there a reception plan?
Tim?
And Harvey?
Andy, come on.
Is there a reception planned?
Yes.
Tomorrow from four to six at the North Collegiate, everybody. It's family is here. So that's why you have a lot of people. Well, thank you, folks. Some of the senior advocates here and nominating committee are here. So thank you guys.
No way.
God, girl.
Do you want to go? You want to leave?
No, I want to leave.
Or you want to stay?
Okay, girls.
And for those standing out there, there are a lot of seats in here now if you'd like to move in and grab a seat.
Yes, please come in. Don't hover.
Alright, uh, that takes us to item thirteen, Public Works Week, uh, May eighteenth through twenty fourth. So we're in the middle of Public Works Week. Uh, the theme of, or by the America Public Works Association, uh, states that they're proud to announce a theme of people, purpose and presence for the twenty twenty five National Public Works Week poster. Meeting needs of people is what gives Public Works its sense of purpose. Public Works professionals are ever present, working in the background to add advanced quality of life for all. The people purpose presence theme highlights how Public Works make communities safer or vibrant and a better place to live. Whether serving as first responders responding to electricity outages, providing regular waste pickup or making roads and sidewalks passable after a winter weather event. The public works is always there when people need them. I feel like this is very fitting. So as we have recently gone through our restructure within our public works department. As we're going through that, Kami asked each of our public works, uh, employees what it meant to them working for, for Solon and, and in that role. And a lot of the comments that they made line up with this theme that they have. Uh, we're very fortunate to have the staff that we have here. Uh, it gave us all the confidence in the world for the restructure that we have. All three of our superintendents are here this evening as well. Um, and it's just cannot say enough about how you guys have continued to pave the way. As we look at the future of Solon, the future of the department, everything like that. And it's the, the effort, the attitude, everything that you guys give day in and day out. Further gives us the confidence that we made the right decision as far as doing the reorganization with that. And so with that, I just want to say thank you for all that you do and, and everything that you do. This town would not be what it is without you. So it's, you know, a week is probably not enough of it. But again, just very appreciative of all that you guys do. Any comments?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next week have a public hearing, uh, for fiscal twenty four budget amendment. Do we have a motion to move going to a public hearing?
I'll move to go in public hearing.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
We are now in the public hearing. Kim?
Yes, thank you. We have um, an amendment to this, the FY twenty five budget. Uh, this amendment is um, on the expenditure side. We did not have any amendments on the revenue side, unfortunately. And I put there's amendments on the revenue side. So uh, what the council's going to be reviewing and approving tonight is an amendment in your packet is both an Excel spreadsheet that outlines the, each of the amendments per line item and then as well as the state form that needs to be submitted by the last day of the month. To amend the budget. The majority of the budget amendment has to do with the purchase of both the brush building. Um, which was not budgeted or planned at the time that the FY twenty five budget was approved. And there was also the purchase of one twenty one North Market Street. Um, so tho- those collectively along with some smaller related um, uh, costs associated with those purchases. Equate to uh, one point five million dollars. The, the budget amendment itself is just over two million dollars. And um, again, those, the majority of those are, are either um. A project related like the well three project, which was unexpected, which was an unexpected expense. Where we are getting some reimbursement from the insurance company, but not, but about a third of that is be of that sixty four thousand dollars is being um, refunded. So what you'll see as you look at the budget amendment is it lists the uh, the line item number, the department, the original budget, the new budget amount, the amended amount. Any notes as to what exactly the uh, change was for? And if it's going to be reimbursed or if it needs to be re- uh, covered by another fund or within the same fund. Um, fairly routine, uh, it actually fairly very small amount in uh, line items needed amended, which is unusual. It's just that the large numbers reflected of those property purchases.
Any questions or comments? Open any information for them?
As always, thank you. I don't think Kami and the staff at Hardwood are a pleasure.
It never ends, does it?
With that, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I am willing to close the public hearing.
Second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
Takes us to old business, item fifteen, ordinance number four ninety one, water rate ordinance. This is the second reading. Any changes from?
No changes from the first reading.
I'll move to approve for ordinance four ninety one. I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
Takes us to ordinance number four ninety two, sort of rate ordinance. Any changes from the first reading?
No changes.
Number two, praying orders number four ninety two.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yeah.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
Takes us to new business, uh, item seventeen, Board of Adjustment Variants, Joe Mack. Kim?
Uh, last night the board of adjustment met and they approved a variance for um, a new deck on the front of the property at two oh three East Fifth Street. This uh, home has an existing cement step that is deteriorating. And they want to replace it with a wood decorative deck on the front. Because the house was built uh, prior to today's zoning standards, it is considered a non-conforming structure. And therefore the code doesn't allow a non-conforming structure to be enlarged. Uh, they wanted to um, create, not really come out any farther than the current existing steps, but wanted to go across the front of the house. And um, the board did approve that last.
Questions?
I think, I think we've seen in the older parts of town where this has happened multiple times and so. Yep. I'm.
I have no problem.
No problem.
Um, I'll move to approve the Board of Adjustment Variance for Joe Matt.
Second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
Takes us to item eighteen, resolution twenty five twenty three, the fiscal twenty five budget amendment that we had, uh, just had discussion on during the public hearing. Any additional comments?
Uh, the public hearing requirement was met tonight and the publication, publication requirement has also been met. So after approval, then this will be submitted to the state.
I'll move to approve resolution twenty five twenty three.
I'll say. Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
Take this to item nineteen, resolution twenty five twenty four, transfer of funds. Kami?
This is a resolution that um, is a financial transfer from the local option sales tax fund to the general fund. Uh, for the purpose of the brush building purchase. And this is a temporary transfer once other properties are sold, that one will be reimbursed.
Questions or comments? Loaded for resolution twenty five twenty four. Second. Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
Takes us to item twenty, resolution twenty five twenty five, wage, wages resolution. Kim?
Yeah, this was a resolution for uh, city hall personnel. This is a resolution to reflect a wage increase for the city clerk who has taken on additional duties since the restructuring of Public Works. And also the uh, new hiring of a new finance clerk who will start June second, as well as a uh, part-time city hall clerk that who will start this week. To help with some additional assignment.
Questions?
My motion to approve, so resolution twenty five twenty five.
Second. Duncan?
Yes.
Parlor?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
Takes us to item twenty one, resolution twenty five twenty six, the two mile fringe area conditional use permit for Upmire Farms.
Yes, so thank you. So uh, we received a conditional use permit application from Johnson County. Uh, this is in regards to the um, the property owned by uh, the Upmire family. This property's been in discussion with council and staff for several months as this is the proposed site for the new Jordan Creek Church. And the conditional use permit application is a process that the county has um, directed this project through and therefore flows through the city council. The city council has an opportunity to comment on a conditional use permit. Uh, but as the council's well aware, uh, there is a dispute as to the process of the conditional use permit. The council uh, has um, has taken the position that this should be fall within the fringe area agreement because of the proximity this stolen city limit, current city limits, as well as uh, just the impact of the project would have from a infrastructure and planning standpoint. Uh, that said, Kevin Olson has advised um, to move forward with the county's uh, process.
So we have until June thirteenth to, yeah, June thirteenth, I have the right date, we submit our comments back. So I think um, I think we want to, I'm, I mean, obviously we've seen the letters go back and forth. We still believe that this is a subdivision within the media fringe area agreement. Uh, the Upmire family did uh, split uh, a parcel into two tracks with an Otters parcel and sold one of them to Jordan Creek Church already, which to me meets the definition of the subdivision in there in the fridge area agreement and the Johnson County uniform, unified development ordinance. Uh, Mr. Bussard quoted a definition of a lot in from the zoning code, not from the, not from the subdivision code, part of the uh, unified uh, development ordinance. So we still have, we still have uh, we still have a dispute about whether that should uh, whether this should be going through the process that they're uh, uh, laying right now. Uh, second of all, I think what, what we need to do is discuss uh, discuss uh, what conditions that the city would like to see on this. If it goes through the conditional use permit application with the county, which uh, I think we should be able, we should discuss this and then at, at our next meeting, make the formal comments back to the, back to the uh, the Johnson County to be used with their Board of Adjustment Hearing. So Dave, did you have some, did you want to go through what the comments uh, that, that we put on the resolution? I think a lot of them are just engineering comments, if I remember correctly.
Sure, uh, some of the things that we had in there were uh, with respect to the water, uh, make sure that um, as with any development that, that happens. Uh, we require that if not, point of contact city water, they're developing in the area that is known to have issues somewhere that we have with the development just west of there. Uh, that they, they are required to test to make sure that the water supply is adequate before a plan proceed too far. If they need to hook on to city water, the bedroom is incorporated. Uh, sanitary sewer, there is a provision for a septic system, but the intent is that if the city were ever to extend sewer within a certain distance, it would be required to hook on. As with the state code, uh, the stormwater management plan should be developed uh, in accordance with what the city has, you know, which is city standards since they're in the fringe area agreement. And then there were some requirements as far as the traffic study, just to make sure that not only the roadway alignment for the future road there, but also the turn lanes and the, the traffic pattern in general fits with what we're looking to do short term and long term. So we're, we're looking to make sure that that is um, adhered to. Those were the, the main things that, that we looked at um, again, uh, with our site plan review. Uh, potentially at risk here, if this moves forward, we would not be allowed to provide comments in the site plan either if it doesn't proceed according to what we wanted to see. We want to make sure that we have everything in place so that if this ever does get to a point where it's going to be in the city, there aren't things that are done that aren't compatible with what we have in our site plan agreements. So those are the main points, you know, in that section. Um, if you have anything else you wanted to cover?
I, I think the other thing is that we need to look at, if we get a chance to look at the initial, the site plan would be to have a development agreement like we've had with other developments outside the city limits. Developments outside the city limits that if they ever come into the city, that they have to comply with the city, city standards at that time. But we're not saying they'd have to do anything with it now, but that would be something that we would like to have uh done with this subdivision also.
I think one thing to notice with every step of the process, that that the city is not opposed to the church being built where it's at. It comes down to just having the the orderly, the growth and development expansion um of the city. And so we want to make sure that any future growth does not hurt our current taxpayers. Uh, and that development or growth should should fund itself with that. So I don't know if there's anything else that the council would like to. Talk to, anything that feel that we had discussion previously that may not have been covered for the talking points that Heather or Dave shared this evening?
I just want to echo that the um. This is about the execution of the growth and development and this is not about our neighbors creating an amazing church face. Um, I think we all welcome that. Um, this is about a really important. Considerate process that we have to go through as a city. Growth is such an important issue for us right now. We're expanding so quickly. We just heard about water issues. Um, so. I think everybody is uh just wanting to make sure that we make really good choices that not just for us now. But for our kids, for the future councils, for future generations of Sullen, because I know this church will be part of the community for a long time. Um, and uh, so I I hope, my hope is that we can work all of this stuff out um to the best um for everybody in our community.
That we definitely have a whole house tonight. If there are uh questions or comment, uh, because we had citizens speaking earlier, that was for non-agenda items. If anybody uh would like to speak on this, we we do have to add three minutes um per person if there is anybody that would like to. Um, speak on the topic. Uh, so with that, so the plan would be that we would formalize uh the resolution?
Yeah, so if anybody looks at what we've listed already and that by the time the next meeting comes around, we will. Do a formal resolution to send to the county, that would be our comments under under their uh conditional use permit process. You know, we, as I said, we don't agree with the process they're using, but we want to make sure that our comments are heard if that's the process they're going to go through. So I would say if anybody has anything else that's not listed on there, make sure to get to Kami and uh. So that we can get it finalized for the next meeting and then we'll, we'll review it, approve it, send it to the county for their processing of the application.
I I just want to make it uh clear that this, this came to us initially as an annexation request, correct? That they wanted to annex this property?
The project came to the city council and the city council requested that they annex.
And that, and it had, it had more, more than, I mean, it was, it was a. Everyone was on board with it for the most part. I had some concerns with it. Um, but for the most part, everybody else on council was, was on board with, with this project as long as it met city standards, which correct?
And I'll just echo that, we put welcome to the church, just just making sure that the process fits in and as we grow. Compatible with city standards, that doesn't interfere with future roads and. As we live with any other developer project.
Are you still open for comments and questions?
Uh, my name is Paul Desmond. I actually don't live in someone. I'm the design professional for Jordan Creek Church. And so. I want to make sure we're all aware of the, the sandbox that we were playing in, were within the the confines of that we were allowed to. So while we went to annexation, um, there was, it came immediately to our attention after we hired our, our general contractor that. A massive financial burden on a church that is just trying to serve the community. And so when we were talking with the county, working with Kami, um, did uh. It allowed us to have clarity of saying, hey, we want to be in a position to uh serve the community well. Uh, while the expectations of potentially bringing water and paying for it up to our site. Um, potentially using our land to connect to a development to the east. Uh, just wasn't in the the budget for us. And so we uh, we went back to our site plan. Uh, which you should have a, a, a new copy of that we sent a few months ago. Uh, and we looked at saying, hey, how can we serve the church well from a design professional as a client? Make sure we can provide growth opportunities for the city as they get to the west. Um, but also play within the confines of, of what Johnson County is allowing us to do. Um, and so we, we exhausted all of the options, um, because. I I'm assuming everyone is knowing, but they're going to lose their church home. Um, and that's on, that's on a timeline. Um, and if they lose their church home, they're losing the opportunity to serve this community. Um, as I have a big heart for serving kids. Uh, it's something that's a massive uh impact that they're having on this community. Um, and if we lose that, where do they, where do they, where do the kids go? So I've heard it all night of, we're trying to focus on the growth of future generations of the community. And so is Jordan Creek. So that's been the intention of trying to get it through um using, using the county. Um, and then when the city is uh getting up to that point of orderly development, they want to be a part of it. So, thank you.
One, one question I had on that is, you talked about the annexation, it was going to create this financial burden. What, was there anything that the city stayed, you know, that you had to connect to the development to the east?
Yeah, that was, that was a statement that was provided to us of uh, that, that development is, is uh filed next. Because they only have one entrance in and one, one entry or exit out. And so in order for them to grow appropriately per the, per the development ordinance is uh, you, you needed a second exit. And so the way that was uh um relayed to us is that we, we had to put that. Um, and it was just to attune to, at that point, it was twenty to thirty percent of our budget. And that's just, I mean, even, churches don't make widgets where they need to sell more things. They're, they're in the business of salvation and ministry. And so um, they just can't budget for a two million dollar. Unless you guys are open to helping raise that, but.
And would that, was that something that we said that they had to put in the road or anything like that? Just I want to make sure that we're getting facts out.
It was, it was the intention. You know, we were in those meetings and I was, I was personally there and other, that was the intent. Of if we were to annex, this would be the intention of connecting the city sewer and water. And then having an opportunity to pay for connection um as our site plan to the development to the south of us.
Okay, and I don't, I don't know if you were here at the meeting when we discussed this as well, but council is on board with being open to options without. So I just want to correct that, that the city has not said you must connect to city sewer or you must.
During the annexation process, that was the intent. So there is.
Okay.
That's not correct. That is not true.
We'll, we'll stand on that. We've got notes. The recommendation given by Dave was that we would um need to put that bill for developer.
Well, we can pull up meeting minutes. I, I disagree.
This, this whole council besides me. Let me finish. Let me finish. This whole council besides me said that they were willing, while you guys have septic until the city grew out to that point. They also said they were willing to let you connect to water after the meter, if you could get approval from the gallery acres. That this was, this was things that they all agreed on. And the only thing we wanted was this street to be up to city coach. Is, is that, is, is anything I'm saying false?
We're not.
We're not talking about meetings. We're talking about two different meetings.
Well, I'm talking about the city council meetings.
Totally understand.
And this is, and this is what they, this is what we, as a council decided on.
And appreciate that.
So don't, don't say that we aren't saying what, what we did, because we've got minutes that say everything that was said.
I'll wait till you're finished.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Um, we're speaking about a meeting that we had with the city administrator and with the city administrator privately in this room. Um, before that, all the meetings that have taken place since we've got a purchase agreement for this land. Um, around April of two thousand and four, that we've been in this process trying to work with the city to make this. Um, to annex. So we've worked continuously to try to make this happen. And then we were recommended by the city. Dave, would you like to speak to this?
As far as what we.
What the recommendation was. Jordan created in that private meeting.
The recommendation was to provide accommodations, so that if we wanted to put a road in the future, there was a spot. And we, we talked about the possibility of instead of them putting in the driveway. Uh, just for the church that we widen that section so that it met city road standards for that portion that might bring your driveway and turn some to the street.
And then that problem was.
We didn't have issue in the future with, probably to redo that and keep the church access available. Because there's the additional cost in order to put some temporary, you know, the standard later.
And do you, do you recall that city recommendation was that we'd also put a road in from the current development? To the curb cut?
That was the area that we were trying to maintain some sort of future roadway connection. So when we had looked at that from a planning standpoint, that was the path of the road and it comes onto the south end of the lot that you were going to build. We talked about again in that driveway that you were putting into the church in the north, putting that in beneath the city standards. So at some point, we could connect to that with that roadway that develops.
Hey, what was your recommendation for who should pay for that?
For the portion that was up against the church.
From the lots development to the south end of the.
We did not make a recommendation on who should pay for that. Typically, that's funded by the developer. But that was, in, in that case, that would be whoever the landlord becomes when they.
Then I'd just like to make a note, that was a, that there's strong disagreeing on that point. That, that obviously we took. Um, and basically that's a little over notes as well. We were, we were very uh clear. But that was developers, if we were considered a developer. Uh, we had that conversation, talked about St. Mary's, if you recall, and I'm a donor, and things during the widgets. Um, and, and.
How about you?
And so anyway, long story short, um, and that's the point of discussion, the point of discussion. Um, we would totally annex if we didn't have to, uh, who were an ass or spend a million dollars. Before we even touched the land um to make this happen. And just if we desire to really want to do that, in our intent. Um, the bottom line is, is that um, we created a hardship for you guys, building out of order. Um, but we had hardship, you know, the buildings being sprayed. We have no place to, to go in April twenty-seven. So, um, we're out of order. Willing seller, willing buyer. Um, we came to an agreement. Uh, and the reality is that um, that hardship for the million dollars to, to build. Is that what other options do we have? Well, there's an option that seems to serve you guys and serve us, that when you do catch up, we'll, we'll, we'll come. In the meantime, we can, we can, we can continue to proceed to allow the church to function and serve.
I want to make a final comment to Dave's point of. The developers been expected to pay for the cost of roads and utilities, which are totally normal. You know, working in Cedar Rapids, seeing the amazing growth of Sullen, totally normal things. The developer and the owner of the land is us and we're not a developer and. Or again, the comment to be saying, the expectation of the developer, the landowner to put that road in, that's a burden that. We wouldn't, we couldn't expect the church to pay for to connect to a, a development that's for profit.
Has, did the church purchase all the way up to the, the watch group?
The church purchase.
We're not contiguous.
So that they might not need a street all the way there.
That's, the, the issue is now, the bottom issue is this is all that I can get at, is that we have a hardship because the building that we just built. We don't want to build, we were staying in the center of the church. Uh, but we have to find land and so we found, uh, Bob, we've been great to work with. Um, but the land is not contiguous. So before, as soon as the purchase agreement was signed, we came to talk to the city administrator and said, hey. What's the next steps? That was April of twenty-four. And so um, it's been a very long process that has been hard to with, to say least. And we've tried to be very accommodating, we waited for responses, we've done all this stuff. Um, because at one point, the deadline had been reached, spring of twenty-six, when that was being destroyed. Until the city and the school figured out they were going to do a two-year lease. Big relief for us. Um, having said that, uh, we're out of order. We, we, we admit and we take responsibility for the fact that we have created a hardship for the city. Based on the growth, the plans and desires of the council. Totally understand and have to take responsibility for, but we don't have another option. And so the, the fundamental question tonight, that, that I would say we have, we're increasing the liability or an asset. That's to be what boils it down. And I would say we're, if we're a liability, then help us understand that we're, we're a liability. If we're an asset, then I, I would, I would, I wish that we could just work together.
And I would say, we understand that you have a hardship with that. We have an obligation to make sure that we have controlled. Well-thought-out growth, you know, that we do not create a burden for our taxpayers. And so we, what we are asking is that we follow a process. This is not against the church. We, we've commented several times, we think. The, the proposal, the layout, everything is a gorgeous plan, but it's, we have an obligation.
What, what would be the burden? That, that's the one thing we.
Well, everybody else is gonna, everybody else is gonna have to put the bill when we start building and connecting to those things. Like it's going, that, somebody's going to pay for that. It's going to be our residents and not every resident goes to your church.
Agreed, fully agreed. But where would the burden be to hook up to the, to hook up? So there's a bean field in between that we're talking about here. And there's going to be a million dollars in the infrastructure that someone has to put in. So are we losing property tax dollars? Or what are, what are the tax burden? With the obligation.
Cost of development should be on the developer, whether it be a church or a residential development, a commercial developer. With that, so what we're asking is that you follow the same steps that we require any other developer as we, we talked through with. The, the water, the uh traffic study, all of these things, we're not asking or treating you any differently than we do any other developer. And so our ask is that we follow the process, because if we make an exception, because you, you are a church. Again, asset to the community, but if we make an exception, it opens the door for them, okay, what other exceptions can we make for others? And as we have a process, we follow the process.
Okay, so the reality is that, um, if that's the case, what if we're in an impasse and we're still in the same impasse? We understand your obligation. We have a hardship. So we said, okay, no problem. Obligation, hardship, oh, there's another option. We just, we expended everything we could do for a year, right? So this was solved both of our, seems to be what solves both of our, you get to continue to work on your obligation as a city council. We get to move forward because our churches, buildings are being destroyed to meet together. So we get to take care of our hardship. And when, if some developer decides to buy that bean field and put in a road and run the infrastructure. We're, we'll, we'll sign the agreement. I heard you, I heard you say, we'll, we'll sign the agreement. Okay? So help us understand where is the issue with that?
It goes back to the burden that it creates. So if we need turning lanes, why should our taxpayers pay for turning lanes to get into your property? If the DOT states that turning lights are needed, it's called up.
It's not a state highway, county highway, secondary road.
So that's still gonna, that's still gonna create a burden on taxpayers? No?
We don't. We don't know if anyone's gonna buy that lot. We're talking about.
Have you seen the way this town's grown?
I have.
We heard the same, we, we, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry to cut you off, but we heard the same exact thing from people out at the horse farm when we were dealing with them. There's no way that the, the town's ever going to grow out this far. I'll be long, I'll be long dead and gone before the towner grows out that far. Well, it's just not true. Sullen's a growing town. And within the next ten to fifteen years, the, it, the town will surround your church.
Yeah, it could be.
I, I mean, you, you can say that it won't and you're wrong, because there's already a development just on the other side of the road from it. There's already a development coming from the other way from it. So I don't want to put that tax burden on the next generation.
Understood. So that's really the issue here, the tax burden, if we're really talking about the potential tax burden, maybe a decade from now.
That's.
Is that fair? Is that the real issue?
I mean, it's still at the end of the day, it's a tax burden to our citizens.
Okay, how many people here in the building that are part of Jordan Creek are taxpaying?
We, we, if we're not gonna do this.
I know, I know, but I mean.
This, this is, how many of you live in? How many of you live in town? We can do this all day long.
I tried to respect and not speak over, if I can just tell, just the reality is that a lot of these churches also is taxpayers. Uh, trying to also, they love the community. Um, and so we're talking about, I've, I, we, we respect that reality. But where else do we go and what else do we do?
I don't think that's for us to figure out, unfortunately. I mean.
Yeah, I understand that, but then I go back to last, to, to ask their liability. What if we think broader in terms of economic development? What is having a thriving, we have a thriving Catholic church here, right? Wh- wh- what does having a thriving Protestant church do for Solon? Does it help drive economic growth?
The bottom line is though that I, I can't pay for your church.
Well, well, we're not asking us to pay for you. So we're talking, we're talking about the turning lane, right? So what is the turning lane talk?
That's, that's, that's not.
I know it's not. I'm just saying the reality is what we're, again, what we're talking about is potentials. That are pretty hypothetical.
I don't, I think they're hypothetical.
And then we can have a difference in opinion. That's okay. That's why we decided to go this route that would allow us to speak with the county. And say, in the meantime, because we're at this impasse. This gives all of us an opportunity to move forward. And if that road happened, the only thing that could happen potentially is this turn lane. But it's a secondary road. So we don't know, they don't, we don't know what they're gonna require. I, I apologize. I don't have that detail.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah.
There's been a lot of conversations that happened over the past year about this project and Dave and I are obligated to. Um, share the code requirements with any developer and that's what we do. Um, but what we don't have is the authority to waive any of those requirements. So as the discussion about. A septic tank versus connecting to city sewer, a well versus connecting to water. And, and a road connection through there, uh, we shared that this needed to come before the council. We just don't have the authority to waive such requirements. It's our obligation to explain the code, explain the process as we do with any developer that comes. Um, comes before us. Um, and so when, um. When the council met, uh, in February, um, at the church's request, um. The council, uh, was very supportive of the project. I shared that in an email with Rodney and Erin. And action items on there and included completed traffic study to verify where the street and access opening. Should be on highway three eighty two and if turn lanes will be required. And then determine the cost of the street access and be prepared to discuss how this doesn't align with their project budget. Because. What the message that Dave and I heard from the council was that there was flexibility. But it's still the cost, it is still the burden of the developer to determine the costs. And then bring that to the council and explain why it's a burden. So the council can make a decision accordingly. Um, the same with, uh, the sewer connection, determine the connection options versus, uh. Uh, versus a septic tank and the related cost and be able to share that. With the council and with the water connection. So the flexibilities were extended at that February meeting. Um, for the project. And so I think Aaron is right. We, we, we were explaining what the code was. Because that's our job and that's our requirement, but we don't have the ability to waive those requirements. And that's where the council at that February meeting extended, um, I think a lot of general. Um, support for waiving some of those requirements. However. Nothing ever came from those conversations because the direction that then happened with going with the conditional use permit. That's my summary of the situation. I don't know if that helps or hurts.
But I also, but just to go over a shirt, but. But to say that the city is not willing to work with them on it and that we are enforcing this to a T would be completely inaccurate, correct?
I don't think anyone said you're not willing to work with us.
Yeah.
I, if you.
Right.
But it's not coming from Jordan Creek nor.
I'm not saying, saying you guys, I'd say within the community, that is a feeling.
I share it a lot every day in the community.
Yeah, and I'm sorry you did hear that.
But the reality is that articles have been written and things have been communicated that we haven't been communicated with at all. We haven't been asked for any articles ever written. No one's gotten a quote from us. No one, I mean, till this meeting, we haven't really spoken about it.
I do want clarity on road access and the code perspective that's been talked about, um, and I'm trying to figure out what road access do we need? To the bean field that's to the south. Um, it's been mentioned a couple of times in a zoning, in a code situation, we've scoured code. To make sure we're within our, within our rights. Uh, there's nothing that we need to allow access to from our property. There's a. Do we need a wetland to the east of us? And there's a bean field that's privately owned that cannot be guaranteed that it's going to ever be sold. And so I'm trying to figure out where in code it says we need to provide access to either of those things.
I believe that city engineers said that in order to make the development happen, we need a through lane. It couldn't be a cul-de-sac at the end of the new development. Again, we're no problem.
What the code says is that we have to make provision for logical extension of strength. Trail ends, there's that property line. The real, only logical, uh, path to that forward is to follow along the trail corridor. And then turn up north to three eighty two. We looked at a few different options internally. We discussed whether we could go west to Polk. We discussed whether we could go over to the existing development that's there. Neither one of those seem like they were real potential. And the logical extension would be to turn that and go north. And it seemed that there was an opportunity to combine the driveway if there were going to be turn lanes there. Potentially, um, combine all that into one. So the roadway that goes through that potential, uh, potential development area. We need to preserve a path to that roadway for future connection, which is what we're talking about on the south edge of your property. So you are developing that lot. You're not developing the lot that has to be built in it. So you as the developer would be responsible for development and providing for a logical extension of the future street. Which is what the process.
Absolutely. And the reality is that's where things want to arrive. You understand, like, when this, when, when there are options for the city, again, this is in February, actually, it was in January. This was the email that came after that, after there was conversation that we could go down to county after a phone call that came, me and I had together. Our city administrator and I had together. Um, so again, April of twenty four. We, we got that email in February of twenty five. There were lots of meetings before that that we could bring up the notes to as well.
I guess to kind of wrap things up this evening, we're at an impasse on this. We will be providing comment back to the county. On that as, uh, both Kevin and, and Dave stated, uh, comments that we will be wrapping up and, and making with that. So we'll continue to move forward with the process. Our ask is that we follow the process.
And we, we will, can I kind of say one more?
Let's keep it short though.
Sure, absolutely. Uh, we want to follow the process and we've tried to follow the process and don't. You know, you disagree.
I just, we're beating the death force here.
Okay. Fair enough.
Can I ask something? Can I say something, Aaron?
Sure.
Hey, Lindsay. We, I represent part of the congregation. I appreciate anything you say because we've made it a point. To be not in opposition with the city because we really support and love Solon. And I think I can speak for all of us that we're here more. To hear directly for ourselves from you. So if there's something that you need to say that we've never heard before, I appreciate being informed. And to even speak to Mr. Duncan, like I hear the same things in the city and I don't ever want it to be. That anybody in Jordan Creek is saying that the city is keeping us from building. We've maintained silence because we quite frankly don't know a lot of the things to pre, put our trust in our leaders. To do the right things, do the right protocol without us being another voice. So if any of you have something that you'd like to inform the general public about. I would really appreciate you saying something because we want to be in support, we want to be informed and we want to move forward with the best way possible too. So not to cut anybody off, but if you've got something to say, this is the first time a lot of us are hearing it. So that's why we're here. Not to create an impasse and like this big wall, but to be like, no, we're actually super in support of everything and we want to be informed with how we can be on the same page too.
Okay, yeah. The, the comments and just for the, the turnout tonight, I would say. Of, of discussion, again, just the respectfulness, the politeness, everything, I would say is extremely appreciated. Uh, there have definitely been heated. Uh, meetings in the past and this is certainly can't be easy here for all of us. Yeah, more enjoyable for all of us as well with that. Our, our biggest thing and it's again, the council has spoken that we are in favor of the purge of the plan, everything like that. But we want to ensure that we are just following the, the process. We know this is out of order. We know there are hardships on both sides. With that, and we want to make sure that we're looking out what's best for the, the community.
As a, as a, just a little public peon, it's the timeline and when you're on the outside and you don't know all the intricacies. We've known about it for two years. So when, when you're part of a city, you're part of the community and the church, where I stand in question is. How is this process taking so long when we do have an endpoint and we need to find a new home? And knowing that there is an impasse and there's things going on, I know it's going to work out. But I think the stress falls on all of our shoulders of, we gotta tick the clock and how do we? How do we move in an organized manner to, to still be able to serve the community and serve our kids? Because I would say most of us are also very legacy driven. So it's just, it's that time clock too. There's been, I mean, I've been in the basement of the old high school for two years working now and it's like, okay, so what else is going to break down? Before the whole building blows up and we have nowhere to go, right? But I really appreciate you guys and thank you very much for everything you've been doing on your end too.
Yeah, I think, one thing I would add is, I think anytime in my career and working in the school business is. Try to put yourself in position of, of the, 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 the other side and, um. We go to Jordan Creek ourselves and so all along, I appreciate what your leadership has done. You're doing what you have to do. Um, is it exactly the way we want it? Probably not, but. You're doing what you have to do, which is what you spoke, you got a deadline after. Um, you got a prayer answer, you got an extension on this thing, but, uh, and I appreciate that. I mean, I appreciate what you're. What you're doing, what you're trying to do for the community and I understand the process that you're going through to get it done. You're trying to get it done. And, uh, I have an, I can't speak in the target, but I have appreciation and I hope you're doing what you feel you gotta do and get it done. And I think of it getting done, but like anything like this, uh, I came into council. Quite a few years ago now where we didn't have. Codes and stuff that every developer hasn't followed. And I was the one to spearhead a lot of this with our, our staff. That we get something that we treat everybody the same. So every developer that comes in here is the same. Unfortunately, you're not a developer. And you, you have to stand us the route, yeah.
So we appreciate where you're at.
That's the real world.
Yeah.
Right? And then it comes down to liability or asset. And again, so we're, that's why we're asking, we're trying to be open handed. With this and trying to say, we, we don't know what else to do. So we're, we're trying to. Uh, accommodate, we're trying to do the right thing. With our hands open in that sense, without trying to fight. Trying to present the case as it is. And it would, the only ask we have is that, um, if we could expedite the comments. That allows us, right now, we're scheduled for. July seventeenth, the board of adjustments. I mean, here's what's gonna, in my mind, board of adjustments. Meeting's gonna happen July sixteen. You guys are gonna make your comments. Uh, board adjustments, they vote in favor of the, of the conditional use permit, we do the usual conditional use permit. We've done our homework, right? We get a year to do it. There's gonna be a billing permit issue, right? You guys are gonna make a comment on our site design. You're gonna like it, you're not gonna like it. Based on code, right? That's where we're gonna be, early back here.
So then why, so why are you even here? I mean, in all reality, I, I hate, I hate to be a jerk about it, but if you're telling, if you're telling us that we have no say in it and the Johnson County Board of Supervisors is gonna prove it. No matter what our comments are, why are you even here?
Because we care about you. No, I want to say, it's not really important. Because we care about you and we care about our community and we want to do the right thing.
Then why even make that comment?
What comment?
That the board supervisors are gonna prove it either way, so.
No, 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 that, I said the board of adjustments.
The board of adjustments. So, so why, why even make that comment?
Because it's a conditional use permit and the reality is.
So then what, exactly.
Because we're gonna have to work together.
So if you don't really care what we have to say.
We do though. We do care because you're gonna have to make a comment on our site design.
Yeah, yeah.
And so you're gonna have to at least work with us, right? Kevin and Mike are, uh, city attorney.
Yeah, so if they, if they have a, if they're, so the board adjustment, if the board adjustment puts conditions on it with the site plan, they're gonna have to come back to us.
We want to work.
Because the site plan is part of the, as long as the county, we'll skip that stuff. But yeah, I think that's what you're trying to say, right?
I'm trying to say the bottom line is if we're an asset, we want to be good neighbors. And so we're trying to. Just give our case. We haven't been an economist, we haven't written papers, we haven't talked to supervisors, we haven't done lots of different things to create. Whatever's out there. So we're just, this is why we're doing it in a public forum, to say to everyone, this is our heart, this is what we're doing, that's why we're doing it. Okay, and then the reality is after that, to say this is the process that's gonna happen. And so rather than having a fight. I'd rather get Josh Bussard in here and have someone else in here. And let's just sit as a bunch of people and talk it through. If this is really an asset. For the community. We don't get anything out of this. We're gonna be stressed, tension, headaches. I promise. Happy to like not do it. And I'll sit down.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, just, oh, Rob, you go ahead.
Thank you. When I was here in the February meeting, I mentioned that we just want to work with you guys. I think you remember that. And so I don't know if the statement that I read to Andrew and Ken and David was conveyed to you all. Cause in meetings, we were sitting, all sitting in this room. And I mentioned that we were gonna go with the county. I went through the stage that I think is really important. To think there's a feeling as though we want to, I think the word I read in the newspaper was bypass. And that wasn't a word we, that was a word we intentionally did not use in that meeting. And so the statement that I read from my notes. Is the city has stated many times that our annexation and development is causing a difficulty because we're out of order in development. Because the, because this building presents stated hardships. We're taking steps to stay in the county and as the city grows our direction, we're willing to entertain annexation at that time. So the comments of, we want to do this, we want to do that, we, we just, we want to annex.
Then why go to the county and not go through the process that we had lined up?
I think what we were, the impression we got, I don't know if it was total, the impression we got is that, listen. You need to, uh, uh, an estimate on this road and we have an estimate on the road. That estimate is over, it's over a million dollars. Um, like we, we've done all that and it.
I said before tonight, that is, that is news to us. And so. At the meeting when we discussed there'd be some flexibility in the council meeting that, that we, we had, I forget which meeting it was exactly, but it's a, the meeting that we.
Yeah.
Talked about. So here are some things. Nothing ever came back to us. So I know you didn't state bypass.
Yeah.
During that meeting, but the fact that you never came back to have these discussions and went to the county. There's your, your answer on bypassing it in itself. So understand where you're at. You're in, you're in a hard place, everything like that. But I feel like it's time that we should probably.
Our intent is to bypass, our intent is to say, as the city grows the development in that direction, that we're willing to put the money in the development at that time. That's what we just, we tried to say to the administrator. And I just wanted to say here.
The county supervisors were the ones that said bypass. So I'm here, we'll put it in the favor of people who said bypass.
So yes, uh, as we move on, appreciate the respectfulness, the, the politeness, just the conversation. Nice to have any yelling, throwing things. So I appreciate again everything. Uh, takes us down to other business, uh, streets, I, no updates, streets.
Any updates other than you, you may have noticed the traffic cameras down around the length view area are in place.
All right, and those are for the, uh, developer, the construction.
Yeah, that is the, for the team grant that we received and it would be, um, reviewing that data. Try and collect that data for schools out so that the council can some, make some, um, future decisions on design for that area. Uh, we know that the school's planning that those improvements to the west parking lots, so. All this information is going to go in our future planning.
Hey, the next council meeting, can you refresh, uh, us on what streets are gonna be worked on over the summer? I know Scottsdale had a progression and one was. We were gonna do it and, uh, starting to get some questions, obviously about our. Whatever street it is or by our mailboxes, it's just getting, putting back, pushing back, it's falling apart like crazy.
Yes, and that, and that, that's Prairie Rose Lane.
Yes, there you go.
Bryce talked about, yeah, we'll have an update on that.
Uh, utilities, no updates. Finance, we have no updates. Um, personnel, we had some, uh. Finance, we have no updates. Um personnel, we had some uh announcements with the wage resolution. Uh this evening, uh building needs and growth, downtown property, so we had some uh discussion with Lauren and Cole on that one. So we need to move forward with that. Uh no update on police. Saw the latest notes that were sent over to the school on the twenty eight East Agreement that Cameron sent. Uh that's it for committees. That, uh item twenty three, the city quick report, Susan and me. Uh item twenty four, city administrator comments.
Yeah, I'm pleased to report that um the state legislator um. Ended the session on May fifteenth without any property tax reform being approved, so that's good news. Um not probably out of the woods, but at least it's delayed for this year. Um also wanted to. Say that um Nancy Upmeyer, um our music on main coordinator has another great lineup planned. And then she has um worked with the Legion to have a Memorial Day concert that will kick off. This Monday following the Memorial Day event. And originally, we talked about it being a July fourth. It got moved to the Memorial Day. Um so it's gonna kick off this Memorial Day. Um and I think at ten thirty after the flag ceremony at the cemetery. Um and then um she has a great lineup planned, so we'll get that out and share that with the public this week. Um and then um. Uh Fireman's Breakfast on Sunday, six thirty to twelve thirty. Is that right? Be sure to attend that, it's a great event. Uh let's see, garbage will be on Saturday, the thirty first because of Memorial Day. And of course, we have garage sales coming up on six and seven.
Uh Johnson comments?
I'd like to take a moment and say how much I love this community and I love the fact that even though we have massive disagreements, we still treat each other like neighbors. And we approach things with equal respect, even when we get to junctions where we can't agree in that moment. I love so, love serving on this council. I love serving the community at large and I love uh the members of the community that make it so vibrant.
Uh mayor comments? I don't have any this evening. Thanks. We have, uh do we have motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
All voters say aye?
Aye.
You opposed?